Okay, welcome everybody to the November 26th, 2024 Bellevue City Council meeting. Before we begin, we'll say a few words about attending and participating at our meetings. We ask that individuals do not disrupt the meetings. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when someone else is talking or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. And if this happens, I will give a warning and then the person's remaining comment time or ask the person to leave the meeting for the rest of the meeting. And I, I hope that we can have a smooth meeting and have respect for each other. So, thank you for being here. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Please join us as we do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United individual with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Lee is going to be reading the Small Business Saturday proclamation, which will be received by Chase Cole, owner of West Coast Drum Shop in Belred. Welcome. Good. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas we celebrate our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 650,000 small businesses in Washington, representing more than 1.4 million workers. And whereas 97% of all firms located in Bellevue are small businesses with fewer than 100 employees, and whereas small businesses were particularly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and related economic effects, including workforce and supply chain challenges. And whereas nearly half, 46%, of small businesses in Washington are women-owned, and 15% are minority-owned. And whereas the city of Bellevue collaborates with the small downtown, with the business, with Bellevue Downtown Association, Visit Bellevue, and many more local partners to support our local businesses as neighborhoods. I apologize. As they create our small businesses, as they create jobs, boost our local economy, and define our neighborhoods, and many small city programs are designed to specifically benefit small businesses and community members. And whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving in the U.S. as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, I can read on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council to hereby proclaim November 30, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in Bellevue, and urge all residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout this year. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. My name is Chase Cole, and I own West Coast Drum Shop right down in Bellevue. We opened up in the middle of COVID when other business were shutting down, and pretty much in 2020, we set out to do it and no one was working and the building was being emptied, basically, that we moved into. And the Gorlaks own it, and they gave us a great rental price to get started, so it helped us. And that's an example of the community coming together to help small businesses, because we wouldn't have been able to start at the $8,000 a month rent and make it viable. And that's one of the biggest concerns facing small businesses is the development that's going on here. I mean, this place has got all the tech companies and the rents are high, and they're going to go up for small businesses, especially for arts, you know? The arts bring in people from all walks of life. And, you know, why I started West Coast Drum Shop is I've been teaching drums for, for years and touring as a musician and playing on records and all that, and I wanted to settle down with my wife and not tour much and just go full teaching. And I have a music education degree, and I've always loved teaching because I love people, and so I wanted to make a hub for drummers and have a drum shop that we can service the people and the clientele, but also give lessons. Education is a big part of what we do. And it brings people from all different counties and cities around us, and they'll come to Bellevue. They spend their money here. So, a lot of small businesses in the arts district do that. These people want the services that we provide, so they come in. And we have to compete with people like Amazon, which is not, you can't compete with that, really. So, you have to think about it as, how do you survive with them? What can you do that's different? And we get so many customers because Amazon exists, because people buy a drum set from there. They might not know about our small business yet because we haven't reached them. So, what do they do? They call us up, they come down to the shop, and now we have a new customer because they couldn't set up their drum set and they need help. So, now we, that's what service we provide. So, they do the big broad strokes and we're like small businesses. We get in to the community and service the community in ways that those big giants can't. They do bigger broad strokes, they do big money and stuff. We work with the people one-on-one. So, they don't work with people one-on-one usually. They create, you know, cool stuff like housing. That's an important thing, but they're not servicing the person directly, right? They're servicing, making it happen. So, that's what small business does. People come in, they work with us, we talk to them, they become part of our community and part of our mission and what we're doing. And for me, if everybody played drums, there'd be a lot less, you know, battles in the world, that's for certain, because people could beat their stresses out, you know? So, you know, that's why I ended up playing music, actually. So, who knows where I'd be without that. And these, these small businesses around here, you know, a proclamation for Saturdays, Small Business Saturday is brilliant, so it helps us a lot more, you know, because you guys have a bigger reach than we do. And so, that going out and making the businesses, you know, get some visibility actually scales well for us, you know? We need all the help we can get. And I'm not one of these people that asks for handouts. I look for ways to increase our business by being the best at what we do. And we're going into wellness, you know, because drums and the science of drumming is really popular right now. People are, you know, I had a kid who basically was going to lose the motion of his whole body, and his one leg that he was using on the bass drum started to regain, so the doctor came to the lesson. He's like, can he play the other one? Yeah. The kid's like, yeah, I want to play double bass. He's still walking, and he was with Make-A-Wish, and he was, he's still alive, and that was 15 years ago. So, who knows if it, it wasn't just drumming, obviously, there was other things, but it's a combination of something positive in somebody's life and the stimulation of that. So, our business provides that, and we're going to go more into that and service the community, because my goal is to service the people who are here and be a positive influence on our society as opposed to drawing from it and expecting a handout.
Well, thank you so much, and thanks for being here tonight. Shall we do a picture together?
I didn't hear you because...
Shall we do a picture together?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.[515.32]
That run behind schedule, that gets stuck in traffic. And these routes, the B line, two seventy-one, two forty-five, could really also benefit from this type of speed and reliability work that we're doing here with the K line. We already have over a hundred projects identified through the CMP, the Transit Master Plan that was mentioned earlier, that we could implement to improve transit speed. But Bellevue hasn't really touched those in a while, and now could really be the time to dust off that CMP and get to work on some of those projects. But this K line really is a great start, this great K line work. So our biggest thanks to you and to staff for working so diligently on this. I'm looking forward to following along with the discussion as soon as I get home. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Sexton.
Hello. Am I good to go? Oh. Hello, council members. My name is Evan Sexton. I work for Plymouth Housing. We're a permanent supportive housing provider. Permanent supportive housing is permanent housing coupled with wraparound services intended to bring people off the street and into homes. Thanks to all of our partners, and especially the city of Bellevue, we were able to open the first permanent supportive housing building on the east side down in East Gate. We are also hoping to finish up projects in Redmond and Kirkland by the end of 2026. At Plymouth, we really value community engagement. I've spent the last year going to various things, coffee hours, luncheons, even bingo nights. And I'm really grateful for all the positive voices that I've heard from the community and all the great feedback we've heard from what community members want to see in their communities. But I'm here tonight just to share with kind of the wider Bellevue community and the council that we're going to have open office hours for the public here on the east side. So those are going to be, we have a space in the Together Center, a coworking space, and as part of that, we have a space that we have once a month. It'll be the second Wednesday of every month from eleven to one, where anyone who wants to learn more about Plymouth, talk to us, have, give us feedback, ask us questions, can come there to the Together Center in Redmond and just talk with us. So we're really excited for the opportunity to be able to learn more, hear more from the community, take questions, again, whatever it is people want to say to us. And I'm personally hoping for strong turnout, so if you know anyone who might be interested, please tell them. And again, that's the second Wednesday every month from eleven to one at the Together Center in Redmond. To close, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak and all the support you have given us and just in general for our mission to end homelessness. So, thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihayl, may Dori dem na'zi gestapa, fascist bandita akokraches from Puerto Rico garbage. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America. I am MAGA member. I candidate for Bellevue Council and twenty percentage vote for me. So I have responsibility not only to talk to you, I have responsibility for these people who support me, who think in my opinion very important. What has happened right now in Bellevue in exactly for last six year under Mayor Luny Robinson is very unique situation, what is don't have analogy, not only in state Washington, in all America. Number one, what is very critical and very important, minority Jewish, Christian, white minority right now in Bellevue is sixty thousand. It's critical absolutely, it's no analogy in American history. How is this possible? So Mayor Robinson for six year with support of this seven, what is I call Nazi pig, you know what it mean, can doing this kinds of discrimination. Can somebody explain to me how is this possible? And it's not analogy in America? No, it's number one, absolutely critical. And I will repeat about this in every meeting because this need be stopped. White people, Jewish, Christian heritage have same right what everybody, and exactly who come from jungle. This number one. Number two, what is absolutely critical too. Under Mayor Luny Robinson, with support of King Country Council, Balducci, you know what it mean, they promote Iranian Muslim, you know what it mean, for council position. I'm okay with this, you know what it mean? He want be a council, people vote for him, is okay with me. I only don't understand why you make him a deputy mayor. He only ten year here, he only first time elected, why he make this, huh? Mayor Robinson, why? Because he your boyfriend? Ah, but seven people very quiet here. Why you freaking idiot, very quiet about this? How is this possible? It's never happened before. And I speak from the comment you've read more than four thousand five hundred time. I speak every day approximately. I never see like this before. What is sense of this? Absolutely no sense. Right now I want speaker, don't have too much time about police department, what is we have for thirty year. I have a bring this, but next time I will talk about this. It's a pure Gestapo department. They acting like Gestapo. They don't have rules, and rules what does they have is Gestapo. Stand Up America for Donald Trump in hundred million Americans who want new revolution.
Mr. Zimmerman, please don't disrupt the meeting.
This is the end of our pre-registered list. So at this point, I would ask if there was anyone else who would like to make a comment to the council, please raise your hand. Mr. Sargent.
My name is Lee Sargent, and I live across the street from Inner Lake High School. And I want to say I have been here for two and a half years, watching each of you do what I think anybody would want to see you do, working for the city, listening to the complaints, listening to the good things that are necessary, listening to those things that you can't have because that's not going to work for the people. And I think you are very representative of this community. I admire what you have done and what you continue to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional speakers? I see no additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So next up, we have a report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Lady Mayor and council members, I have two items tonight. The first one was provided on your agenda. The second one is a verbal update that we'll add regarding the storm response. So for the first one, this is city manager seeking your concurrence for two reappointments to the board, the Bellevue Convention Center Authority or the BCCA Board. And I'm recommending reappearance of John Christensen and Roger Anderson, each for another four-year term, and that term would be effective January first, 2025. Mr. Christensen was first appointed in 2013, and he's been an active member of the BCCA Facilities Committee. He has extensive experience in the venue management industry, and his expertise has helped support operational excellence for the Bellevue Convention Center. Began his term in 2000, and he served as the vice chair from 2019 through 2022, and he's been a long, longtime member, of course, of the board and chair of the Facilities Committee. He's provided very steady leadership, which has been important for many of the main bar capital facilities improvement projects. So this evening, I am seeking council's concurrence for these board appointments, so they will be officially reappointed.
Is there anybody who does not concur with these recommendations? I will take that as concurrence.
Thank you. And so as many of you were affected and know, we had many businesses and residents who were significantly impacted by the power outage and the windstorm this last week, and we want to recognize the difficulties, of course, and the challenges of managing many days without power and communication services. And there were also many areas of the city that had significant damage to property and debris and managing that debris. We had a very robust city response and recovery effort that included a lot of our staff from different departments, and some of that work is still going on now. And so I do want to thank our staff for the extensive storm response. And tonight, we have our fire chief, Hagan, here, and Carl Lunak, our emergency manager, to give the council and the community a little overview of our storm response and the cities, what happened within the city. We will have a full action, after-action analysis later, but this is a time, a chance for them to give you a very current update on what happened. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of council, city manager Carlson. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you this evening on our storm response. With me to my right is our emergency manager, Carl Lunak, and Carl has a couple members of his staff supporting us as well. In the fifth row behind me, off my right shoulder, Carl.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, council. Just a brief update of our citywide storm response. As you are well aware, last Tuesday, November eighteenth, we saw a historic windstorm caused by the bomb cyclone forming off of Washington coast. That storm caused widespread power outage throughout Bellevue and the surrounding communities. At the peak, we saw about ninety percent of the city of Bellevue without power, and a lot of our neighbors and other jurisdictions with similar impacts. At the peak of the outage, one AM, Puget Sound Energy reported about four hundred and seventy-five thousand customers in the area without power. So substantial impacts. The extremely rare storm had a significant impact on the city of Bellevue, our community members, and our staff. Tragically, one life was lost during the storm, which reminds us all of how precious and fragile life can be. The effects of the storm were very difficult for many people, many... Effects were, sorry, start that sentence over. The effects of the storm were very difficult for many people, and we were encouraged by how our neighbors stepped up and really stood shoulder to shoulder, checking on neighbors and loved ones, helping support each other, providing communication between neighbors and neighborhoods and what the city was doing in response. Even before the winds began, multiple city departments began to prepare for the events, including moving to a 24-hour work schedule and then calling in additional staff as necessary. Within the first 24 hours of the storm, fire department responded to 543 calls for assistance, which is exponentially more than the sixty-seven that we would normally see in a 24-hour period. Bellevue Police Department responded to 202 calls over that same period, which is about seventeen percent higher than the normal volumes. Our Development Services team helped dispatch staff to assist our first responders, and 911 call volume continued to be high throughout the week and then the following weekend, last weekend. Our transportation and utilities folks worked together to clear our roadways and sidewalks, preventing storm water flooding. They deployed thirty-two generators throughout the city and kept our wastewater pumping stations pumping, thankfully. Over the total of the storm, we have a hundred and fourteen traffic lights throughout the city, and eighty-two of those lost power during the storm. Staff provided temporary power at key intersections around the city, and our IT and GIS departments worked together with our transportation team to be able to provide accurate, up-to-date road closures and hazard information to the public as soon as it was discovered out in the field. Our parks and community services, along with our facility and asset management departments, worked to support our first responders and the general community by opening up our community centers and city hall here, so that the public could have a place to come in out of the weather, warm up, and charge their electrical devices as needed. Additionally, our facility and asset management team provided a lot of support in refueling the generators throughout the city, and then Parks Department, due to the sheer amount of debris that was collected, ended up opening up our Bannerwood Park parking lot as a staging area for that debris, because our East Gate yard was quickly at capacity. As the response continued throughout the week, police, our CCAT and CARES team contacted several residents who were unable to drive out of their neighborhoods due to downed power lines. Community development checked in with neighborhood associations, and we heard from many of those affected how much they appreciated the city's activities and efforts to contact them during this troubled time. Throughout the storm and the response, Bellevue's communication staff shared critical life safety information, including resources and proactive measures that residents could take to keep themselves and their loved ones safe. There's going to be a lot of talk of Puget Sound Energy's response in this, but they quickly expedited their response by activating their mutual aid agreements and partners from around the Pacific Northwest. They deployed emergency response contracts immediately when the storm hit. It cannot be overstated the amount of significant damage this storm caused to the high-voltage transmission lines that serve our area, as well as the localized distribution system that serves all of our community. As of this evening, right before this meeting, we have less than 100 homes in Bellevue without power. Overall, ninety-nine percent of Puget Sound Energy's customers now have power restored to their homes. We remain very hopeful that the few that are still out will have their power restored by the holiday. The cleanup of storm debris from our city will continue throughout this next weekend and probably for a couple of weeks to come. Preparing for emergencies often happens in the background, out of view, and really has very few cheerleaders. But when emergencies happen, everyone is happy that we're ready and prepared. Please accept this as my thanks to you, the city council, for your continued investment, especially in this recent budget adoption. As your emergency manager here with the city of Bellevue, I can tell you that all city departments were very supportive of this storm response, and I'm really proud to serve this committee, our community, and to be a part of this one-city response effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, appreciate that update. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. We'll have staff introduce it to us, and then we'll hold the public hearing, and then we have an option to take action afterwards.
Thank you, Mayor. The public hearing tonight is regarding streamlining the city's permitting process and amending the land use code to meet new permitting timelines. Staff does have a brief presentation before handing it back over to you to open that public hearing. And from our Development Services Department, we have the director Rebecca Horner and Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Manager, and then they also will be joined by Robbie Sepler, our Assistant City Attorney. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council, Rebecca Horner with Development Services. We've been introduced by a city manager, so thank you for that. We're here tonight to discuss the streamline permitting as part of Senate Bill 5290, and this is the land use code amendment. So tonight, we are asking to hold a public hearing and for the council to consider adopting ordinance language with the land use code amendment for these streamlining measures. Our agenda for this evening includes history and background, an overview of our land use code amendment process, and our review process, and our decision criteria that we used for the land use code amendment. And then we'll be holding the public hearing and asking you to consider taking action. By way of background, we wanted to start with a brief overview of the strong culture of continuous improvement that we have in Bellevue and Development Services. We dates back many years, several decades, but in the early 2000s, when we became a single-point line of business, where we combined four departments into a one-stop-shop. That continued on when we facilitated a regional permitting in the area through mybuildingpermit.com. We established a customer experience program and a permitting center where we put our customers at the center and focus of that experience. So we improve our processes based on feedback we receive from the customers. We also, more recently, created the Bellevue Development Committee to have a regular and consistent engagement with the neighborhood and our stakeholders and our customers. And in 2022, 2022, the council adopted an affordable housing expedited permitting program in advance of SB 5290 because of the strong future focus that Bellevue has and the council's strong support for going beyond the minimum. So specifically to our topic tonight, Nick will walk us through the specific details of Senate Bill 5290 and the rest of the agenda.
Great, thank you, Rebecca, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council. So tonight, we're here to talk about implementation of Senate Bill 5290. This was passed by the Washington State Legislature and signed into law in 2023. The key components of the bill include new permit shot clocks that would apply to cities. And the permit shot clocks are shown here, and there's sixty-five days when public notice is not required, a hundred days when public notice is required as part of that permit, and then a hundred and seventy days when public notice and a public hearing is required. When cities fail to meet these shot clocks fifty percent of the time, then there is a fee refund penalty that applies. There is some ability for us to protect ourselves or shelter ourselves from that penalty by adopting some streamlining measures. So as part of the budget adoption last week, the council did adopt three streamlining measures to avoid those refunds. So how the land use code amendment is implementing Senate Bill 5290, we are going to be codifying those permit timelines. You all considered the LUCA, or initiated it rather, in July, and had your first study session on this in October. At that time, we had discussed moving four permit categories from the hundred-day timeline bucket into the hundred-and-seventy-day timeline bucket. This was also an item that was a point of discussion with the community. It was brought forward to the Bellevue Development Community. We engaged with a lot of our stakeholders on the reasons why we felt it would be appropriate to move these four permits into the hundred-and-seventy-day category. And so we received direction from you all to do that as well, so the code does reflect that difference. The code is also going to be noting that submittal requirements will be posted online. This is important because when staff is reviewing a application for completeness to see if it's adequate for the rest of staff to start their review, we have to base that completeness review off of the submittal checklist that was available to the applicant at the time they were making an application. And so we're just making it clear that these will be posted online, and we'll be sure to update those and message out when those get updated. We also clarify when that review clock begins relative to that 28-day completeness check. There is also new terminology that was introduced in Senate Bill 5290 that we did not have experience with, so there was some definitions that were created as part of this LUCA land use code amendment as well. One of those definitions being nonresponsiveness. So this is a time where we can toll the clock, is if there is that nonresponsiveness on the applicant. This is a situation, of course, we all hope to avoid, and we do kind of pride ourselves on being highly communicative with the applicants to avoid this type of situation. And then another piece that were included as part of this land use code amendment that isn't directed by Senate Bill 5290 but was introduced to you all at that October fifteenth study session, was updates to our DSD rulemaking process. The department has always had the ability to develop rules. The rules are intended to support implementation of the land use code, add more clarity to how we're interpreting the land use code, and then be able to create a process around how DSD decides on how they're going to administer certain provisions of the code. So we don't currently have a process that's outlined on how the director would enact such rules. So this code amendment is really developing that process so that everyone's aware of how we'll go about administering the director rulemaking process. So it does clarify the rulemaking authority that the department will have and outlines when and how the director shall establish rules. It includes a public process, and it also includes an appeal process as well. Some of the director rule examples, just as a reminder, directors' rules cannot set new or different policy than what the land use code establishes, so instead it would provide some of that clarification. So we see some examples where green building is an evolving field. It might make sense for the land use code to specify in more general terms that a green building incentive is appropriate, and there would be tiers to that, and having the rule be able to specify more clearly what those categories of green building are, and then give us a more streamlined process to update when those kind of new programs come into place or expire. Detailing out single-family FAR calculations, it's a common question we get from the development community. They have a strong interest in getting more clear information out on how we do this and how we measure FAR, floor area ratio for single-family homes. And then also explaining building height determination. Our land use code does think about sites in more broad terms, so sometimes sites with unique considerations don't always get addressed fully in the land use code. So directors' rules allow us to kind of clarify how it would be applied in those examples. So moving on to our process for bringing this code amendment to you all, so this is a process for decision, it's a legislative decision by you all. So we followed all of our noticing requirements. We've engaged with the development community through the Bellevue Development Committee. We've also worked with our internal stakeholders, our building division, fire, utilities, et cetera. We've also been looking to the region and seeing what others are doing and providing some of that coordination and consistency as well. So the timeline, as we noted, the bill became law in 2023. The council initiated this land use code amendment in June. You all had your first study session in October, and at that point, you directed us to prepare the ordinance for final action and to schedule a public hearing, so that is what brings us to tonight. And then these new permit timelines that are a part of the ordinance take effect on January first, at which point we'll start reporting our performance against these new timelines. And because this is a process for land use code amendment, there is decision criteria in the land use code that we evaluate to make sure we're meeting, and staff has concluded that this permit streamlining code amendment, as drafted in attachment A, is consistent with the decision criteria required for adoption of amendments to the text of the land use code pursuant to Part 2030J, the land use code. So therefore, we do recommend that city council adopt the proposed LUCA. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you so much. Great introduction. So we'll start with the public hearing, and after we close it, we can do any questions or comments if we want, but this is our third bite at this apple. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no pre-registered speakers signed up for this public hearing, so at this point I will ask if there's anyone joining us who would like to make a comment on this hearing, either in person or online, please raise your hand, and we do have an individual online. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can, Charmaine, thank you.
Okay, your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Heidi Dean here. I apologize, I might be a little disjointed. I'm just joining tonight, and I haven't been able to follow anything with council closely for the last several months. I've been enrolled in a legal assistant program at Brenton Technical College, partly because of the need to be more informed of land use decisions. So I, one of the things that I was listening to tonight, as I was, and as I'm reading on this, one thing that I didn't hear when Mr. Whipple was talking about the stakeholders who were consulted about this decision, was anybody from the community, from the neighborhoods? I heard the Bellevue Development Group, the committee, and that sort of thing, but nobody from the neighborhoods, you know, which, you know, will be impacted by these kind of decisions. I did notice, and it's nice, I saw the idea of extending the written comment period, and I do understand the idea behind that, but one of the things that I find very helpful about the public hearings is the ability to hear the thoughts and comments, the questions that other community members have and/or... that other community members have, and/or the answers that are provided to those comments and questions, you know, because sometimes I might not think of something, but somebody else brings it up and asks, and it, you know, it jogs my memory and my, and I start thinking about things. So taking away the public hearings and just simply extending the written comment period, I have concern about that. So just as a community member, as somebody who's engaged and hopes to reengage once I finish with this legal assistant program, I would appreciate that being considered tonight as you talk about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do see one additional hand in person, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you. Zihai, yeah, I lived in Bellevue for forty years, yeah, it's a long time, and I'm very good with everything what is, how name land, land, yeah, land, land, land. I only don't understand how is this possible, you know, what is mean? So all city right now belong only to rich people. How is this possible? Where is poor people, huh? I'm poor, I'm disabled, low-income senior citizen. Where is piece of land to me? And I need too much, maybe three hundred fifty square feet, maybe five hundred square feet, I cannot find. And in my back, you know what is mean, is fifty thousand people who live in Bellevue, what is have stupid situation with rent, with place, what is everybody name my land, my apartment, my house. Why are you doing with this city, huh? It's don't have knowledge, not in state, Washington. Bellevue one from most rich city in America, you know, number ten for my understanding. So how is this possible? So this billionaire who support you, so this corporation billionaire, trillionaire, what is you support, cannot something doing for poor people, for disabled, senior citizen, your limit for low income, hundred thousand dollars? Are you freaking idiot? When I first time here, you know what is mean, couple of year ago, my ear, not too mild, stand up. I know a low income, there's something like I make fourteen thousand dollars per year, or thirty thousand dollars for family, or fifty thousand dollars for family. How you can establish a limit for people who make more than hundred thousand dollars, huh? Can you explain to me? Who will told me after this, are you a normal people? No, you are real freaking degenerative idiot. You sick, you understand what is mean? So I demand, because I candidate for Bellevue Council, and people support me, if want something from me, I demand change this rule. I demand every corporation, what is bring her, if build a building, what is cost billion dollars, you know what is mean? Give something for everybody, for everybody who low income, who senior citizen, who under SSI. I demand everybody fixes this problem. And I will doing everything what is my power, come and say talking about this, before only one chance for doing this, is clean this dirty chamber from this freaking idiot of fascist Nazi, you know what is mean? So, viva, viva Donald Trump, viva new revolution, viva hundred million American who most poor for something change. Thank you very much. I don't drop.
I do not see any additional hands, I'll do one final call out. Okay, I don't see any additional hands, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so maybe we can get staff back at the table, and again, this is their third time seeing this. It is consistent with our affordable housing plan and our state law. I have no comments or questions, so any, any comments or questions from our? Okay, great, so may I have a motion, please?
Yes. I move to approve Ordinance sixty-eight twenty-three relating to the administration of the City of Bellevue Land Use Code.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. All right, we have two study session items tonight. I think we'll take the first one, and then we'll take a break after that, unless you want a break now?
No, no, that's fine.
All right, I'm willing to take suggestions. So City Manager, would you like to introduce our first one?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The first study session is on the K-line, the downtown route and public engagement. And this is a study session that is an informational update, and so no direction is being sought. And I'll introduce our staff and guests. So we have from Transportation Department, Andrew Sinkalakis, who's our director, Olivia Echola, the Senior Engineer, and then from King County, we have Ryan Whitney, who's the Rapid Ride K-line lead, Yuvia Ellison Morales, the Senior Community Engagement Planner, and Amanda Pleasant Brown, the Government Relations Jurisdictional Lead. And with that, I will hand it over to Andrew to move on the presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and the City Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight with Metro's staff to talk about the K-line, an exciting potential transit investment for Bellevue and Kirkland. The K-line is one part of the strategy to deal with the tremendous growth facing Bellevue. And as you know, through the Complan process, we are poised to increase by seventy-five thousand jobs and thirty-five thousand housing units by two thousand twenty-four. And per the Comprehensive Plan and the Transit Master Plan, the city's growth really will depend upon having a frequent transit network. After tonight's update, Metro will be back again in February for additional data, followed by coming back again in March for the City Council to put together a letter for the locally preferred alternative. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Metro's K-line lead, Ryan Whitney.
Okay, all right, first time speaking in the microphone. Hi, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for having us tonight. Just some quick introductions for my team. My name is Ryan Whitney, I am the line lead for Rapid Ride K-line.
My name is Yuvia Ellison Morales, I'm the Senior Community Engagement Planner.
Good evening, I'm Amanda Pleasant Brown, Government Relations Jurisdictional Lead.
All right, we're working with it. So we are here today to provide an update on the K-line. We were here in June and provided an update on the project, want to let you know what we've been up to since then, and give more details on the locally preferred alternative and a forecast of the project schedule moving forward. Want to highlight some community feedback we collected during our Phase Two engagement, which took place between June and July, and then spotlight on a couple of decisions we've made or recommendations we've made on downtown routing, and a list of speed and reliability treatments, which are very critical to the K-line implementation. Also, just reminder or highlighting, this is an informational presentation, but we will be back in early two thousand twenty-five, as mentioned, to request a letter of support for the locally preferred alternative. What is our Rapid Ride program? Rapid Ride is the highest level of investment that Metro makes into the transit system, and the map here highlights our existing Rapid Ride routes in red. Most of these are legacy routes that were implemented over a decade ago, but we've recently expanded with two new routes, the H-line and the G-line, which recently launched, the G-line, a couple of months ago. We have an expansion route down south, the I-line, and then another route, the J-line, which will serve from the university to downtown. Then the K-line, which we're discussing here, will obviously serve the Eastside Community where the Rapid Ride B-line already serves. And then our line coming in two thousand thirty-one would be the fourth of our expansion routes, also serving the Seattle and then South Seattle area. Some note on the G-line, which recently launched, we've seen pretty positive trends in terms of the ridership of this line. It's exceeded both the underlying route, which it replaced, both the post-COVID ridership numbers that we had for that route in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, and is also exceeding the underlying ridership that we had in two thousand nineteen, so pre-COVID. Specific to the K-line, we've been working on our draft locally preferred alternative, which will outline the project vision, which includes a lot of different elements of the project. Most notably, it'll include a recommended routing for the K-line, which goes from Totum Lake, the North Terminus in Kirkland, to Eastgate Park and Ride, the South Terminus, passing through both the downtowns of Kirkland and Bellevue, creating a lot of great connections to existing transit service, sound transit, and the BRT on I four oh five. Will also include a list of recommended access to transit projects, as well as identification of speed and reliability treatments, which I'll discuss in more detail. And the locally preferred alternative also outlines the station locations, mostly the intersection locations for those. The specific location relative to the intersection will be determined through the following design phases. The locally preferred alternative also includes a planning level cost estimate, because our project needs to fit within our financially constrained budget and the funding we will hopefully receive from FTA and the other funding from Metro. Update on our project schedule, you can see we had an extended planning phase from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four due to an extended project pause, but once we resume planning activities, we are working towards that draft locally preferred alternative, which will be complete by the end of this year, and then go through several iterations of review before it's ultimately submitted or transmitted to King County Council for review and adoption. Once it's adopted by King County Council, that's when the draft locally preferred alternative is considered final, so it'll remain in a draft form throughout that review process, including review from King County Council. The reason the locally preferred alternative is important is because we need that to submit for our FTA small starts grant application, which will be requesting fifty percent of our project funding from the Federal Transit Administration. Beginning in two thousand twenty-five, we'll also go into preliminary design, and then that'll lead into final design and ultimately construction, which we hope to have underway in two thousand twenty-eight to keep us on track for revenue service in two thousand More details on the locally preferred alternative. As I mentioned, the locally preferred alternative will outline the alignment of the K-line, where it's going to serve, where the stations are, and it also outlines the ideal project vision and gives us other areas to further evaluate the project. So it doesn't necessarily say what the project is or will be, but what we hope it to be, and areas where we will continue to evaluate more project alternatives, including speed and reliability treatments. Community engagement, we completed our second phase of community engagement this summer, went from the end of June to the end of July, and just wanted to highlight some of the feedback we heard through that. Nearly seventy percent of respondents listed transit as a most-used transportation mode, which was encouraging because it's, means that we're actually hearing from transit riders who will use the service, so that makes the feedback more valuable for us. Lot of highlights on the importance of speed and reliability improvements and how those would encourage even more ridership, and seventy-one percent of survey respondents agreed the stations get them to and from the places they want to go. On this point also, we published our Phase Two Community Engagement Summary Report, and that is available online through the Rapid Ride K-line website. To highlight a few points where we asked specific questions in the feedback we received, this was a question we had in the survey as part of the Phase Two engagement, which asking people, what would make you use transit more often? And these were the top responses, which are all related to elements that we hope to achieve through our speed and reliability improvements on the project. People wanted buses that get there faster, run more reliably, more frequently, and fewer Another specific point we highlighted in our Phase Two engagement was downtown station location choice. This was one location where our routing was not yet confirmed prior to, or confirmed prior to our Phase Two engagement, so we include this question. We're considering two station locations, which station location do you prefer? And we had forty-nine percent of respondents that preferred one-tenth versus twenty-three percent for one oh eighth, but when considering only respondents that had a preference between the two stations, it was sixty-eight percent in favor of the station on one-tenth. We did initial analysis, additional analysis on these two routing choices and found that the travel time and ridership between the two route choices were fairly similar, so we leaned a lot on the engagement results that we received. Other information we used for the downtown routing choice included, as I mentioned, the public feedback. We also reviewed the routing decision in alignment with council adopted project principles, which were adopted back in June, and impacts to the transportation system, which is a preview to part of what we'll come back with in February, which is further analysis on how these routing choices, and specifically the speed and reliability projects, not only benefit the K-line, but then what impacts those have to the surrounding transportation network, especially in downtown Bellevue. And our project team is moving forward with a recommendation for routing via one-tenth We mentioned the importance of speed and reliability projects and how those benefit both bus rapid transit service for a Rapid Ride program and the public feedback we received around those. So our project team considered several transit priority treatments to evaluate speed and reliability for the project. We considered bus-only lanes, which would be exclusive use of lane space for transit. We considered business access and transit lanes, or BAT lanes, which also prioritize transit but allow business access, aka, or via right-turning vehicles into the lane as well. We considered signal queue jumps, which are really upgrades to the signals that allow transit vehicles to progress through an intersection before general purpose traffic. And we considered transit signal priority, which is a technology onboard our coaches where they can signal to an upcoming signal and extend the green time so they cannot get stuck waiting at a red light. And I want to emphasize that in order to implement our Rapid Ride project, our Rapid Ride program, we need treatments that provide time savings for the project. It helps with Metro to meet our goals, and it also helps with our FTA competitiveness. Further details on speed and reliability treatments, our team decided to focus mostly on BAT lanes rather than bus-only lanes for at least lane conversions. We also have locations where we're considering signal queue jumps and transit signal priority, but those are technology upgrades to the signal and don't require lane space. So for the lane space projects, we considered mostly business access and transit lanes or the BAT lanes previously mentioned, which prioritize transit but also allow right-turning vehicles for business access and driveways. We are also working with Bellevue staff on the request to include employer shuttles in the BAT lanes, and also wanted to let you know the emergency vehicles are always allowed to use the BAT lanes. The LPA will include further details for all proposed speed and reliability treatments, including the BAT lanes, but wanted to highlight some of those here today. So this map focuses primarily on the BAT lane recommendations within the downtown area for Bellevue. We have eleven different projects that are recommended here. The yellow lines highlight the areas where we'd be hopefully implementing BAT lane projects, and Metro's goal for transit priority is to reduce travel time by twenty-five percent compared to existing service or existing travel time. We feel like we're achieving that right now. Specifically to these downtown projects, we are anticipating project savings of three minutes for northbound travel and six minutes for southbound travel, and this analysis was done during the PM peak hour. And there is additional information on all the speed and reliability projects in your information packets as well, I believe it's Attachment C. One specific speed and reliability project we wanted to highlight would be revising the second eastbound through lane on Main Street for eastbound travel. This would be revised to a BAT lane. It is an existing travel lane and would still allow right-turning vehicles at the intersections, but then prioritize transit travel throughout as well. Some of the other considerations we made in evaluating this and other projects was impacts to general purpose travel, not only on the corridor where the BAT lane's being implemented, but on parallel routes and corridors within downtown as well. And the team will present more details about this project and all other projects in our February update. Highlighting next steps for the project, we are moving to our Phase Three of Community Engagement, where we will get more feedback from the community on speed and reliability improvements. We will provide updates and materials on what we're recommending, so they know what is in the LPA, what would the K-line bring to the community, and then they can offer questions and response to that. We will also be holding a lot of in-person meetings and presentations to really any group that wants us to come out and present on specific elements of the K-line project. Our website and survey materials will provide general updates, but any community or group that wants us to come present on how this project impacts them specifically, we can come and give custom presentations focusing on that material they're interested in. The mentioned February council presentation will be to come and share those results from our Phase Three engagement, further information and analysis from our speed and reliability projects, and present more elements of the draft LPA in preparation of the March presentation, where we would come and request a letter of support for the LPA, which is important because we need the letter of support before we submit to King County Council to adopt the LPA, which then makes it final, and we need a final LPA before we can submit our FTA small starts grant application for funding. before we can submit our FTA small starts grant application for funding. And with that, again, thank you for the opportunity to present, and me and my team are now available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So this is just information only. We have a lot more work to do, especially with the public outreach Phase Three. But I'm going to open it up for comments and questions. And Councilmember Newen House, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation tonight. You know, potentially a very exciting development to help ease congestion and transportation issues throughout our downtown core, and appreciate the work that staff has done to date on this. And some of my questions might be, great question, might have to wait till February, until we have more data, more analysis. And that's completely fine, but I'll ask it anyway just to get it on the record here. But I think some of these you're already aware of. So one of the things that I've heard most about, and we had one of our comments this evening about employer shuttles that can use the BAT lanes, and certainly our largest employer is very interested and would applaud that. I'm curious as to other employers that would be interested in having a shuttle there as well. Would they be eligible as well? What's the criteria for other employers in Bellevue that would want to take advantage of this?
Really appreciate the question. So Metro still needs to evaluate what it would look like for employer shuttles to be able to use the BAT lanes. And so part of that is understanding how many shuttles are on the roadway. So we're absolutely open to that conversation. And then we were alerted to an issue, so we're just doing a little bit of our due diligence to make sure that we understand what is allowed in the BAT lanes, and generally Metro's supportive.
Okay, so generally Metro, okay. So it sounds like there's a lot more details that could come forward there. My only request is that we make it as easy as possible and streamlined as possible for other employers to take advantage of this. More is better in this case, especially we add on to the number of people that can use those shuttles and use those lanes. Also want to talk about those BAT lanes in terms of cars being able to drive on the BAT lane. So is that throughout the BAT lanes? Or is that only if they are taking a right-hand turn? Or can vehicles actually be on the BAT lanes throughout the entire route through Bellevue?
They can only use the BAT lanes if they're turning right into a nearby driveway or access point.
Okay. And has there been any study yet on what that impact would be in terms of the overall congestion or throughput?
We've done a preliminary analysis on it for both our Horizon year and a future study year. That was, I believe, our Horizon year is 2035, and the future analysis year was 2044 at request of Bellevue staff. And we're continuing to evaluate those and look at different factors. So I can't speak to specific roadways, but in general, sometimes there actually are, there is a positive impact for both general purpose and for transit. And this is due to the separation of traffic. When you're taking those right-turning vehicles out of a travel lane and putting them into a dedicated space, you're taking transit vehicles out of a travel lane and putting them into a dedicated space, it allows your actual throughput of vehicles that are traveling through to operate at a higher efficiency. So sometimes there are mutual benefits. Sometimes there is a negative impact to general purpose traffic, and we're evaluating what is that? And what is too much impact? Or just the level of that impact and balancing it with the benefits of transit?
Okay, so that's the kind of data we'll get back in February, then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. Because you mentioned like, it's kind of the unintended consequences. And it gets to going to 110th. I worry about the impact that it'll have to 108th and 112th, because then vehicles might decide, well, I'm going to avoid going down 110th, because either I don't understand the BAT lanes or it seems to be more congested now. And that puts more stress on those other streets. So we haven't done any analysis on that yet. Is that something also we're going to have to wait till February? Or is that part of the consideration in terms of going with 110th versus 108th?
It was part of the consideration with the recommendation for 110th versus 108th. And for reference, in the downtown grid, we evaluated parallel streets from Main Street up to Northeast 12th and from 116th to Bellevue Way. So we evaluated east-west travel and north-south travel on that entire grid.
So how do we know this based on? I mean, don't we actually have to implement it in order to know what the actual impact will be? Or can we have enough data to show what the actual impact will be once it is implemented?
Do you want to speak to that, Olivia?
Yeah, sure. Are you basically asking Councilmember Newen House whether we can be confident in these modeling results based on what we're doing currently to prepare for our February meeting with you? We typically, in traffic engineering, use modeling as a tool to project how the overall transportation network will be impacted. And it's currently the best tool we have. For some projects that are smaller in scale, you can do pilot projects. However, for large transit projects, such as the K-line, which is a really important regional project, it's very difficult to be able to test out some of these facilities. So we are relying on the tools that we have, which is traffic modeling right now.
Okay. Does the modeling also include some of the reports coming out, like PSRC, for example, that has recently taken note that the ridership has, I think, dipped or has not come back to pre-pandemic levels? Is that part of your modeling as well?
Our modeling team would likely be better equipped to answer this than I, but what I do know is that our modeling team has provided Metro with a post-process turning movement counts that takes those factors into account.
Okay. And then another thing I'd be interested in is just a total throughput in terms of number of people making it through this route now versus what it's going to look like if the K-line is implemented on this route as it currently is. Meaning like, I know potentially there's more capacity if we get more people on the bus, but if people are not taking advantage of it, then those driving-in vehicles will be negatively impacted by that. Thus, that equates to less people in terms of the overall throughput. So is that something also that we'll come back with in February to look at that data, the potential throughput production, if you will?
Yes. Yeah, we will have a throughput analysis. And we also look at how our other Rapid Ride routes in the area are performing. It's not always a perfect comparison, but it is the best local data point that we have. And we continue to see more recovery on our Rapid Ride routes than some other local routes. And we continue to see data that shows that when buses arrive reliably, frequently, and they run quickly, that ridership will increase. And our most recent data point on that was the G-line launch, which is not only outperforming the underlying route that it replaced, but it's outperforming that route's pre-COVID ridership. So that might have been a little confusing, but we compared G-line ridership the last two months that it's been in service to both the underlying route in 2023 and 2024. It outperformed it. And the ridership to 2019 for that same route, and it outperformed it. So that route specifically, again, it's one data point, but has seen recovery and exceeded pre-COVID ridership.
Okay, interesting. And then the community outreach. How many people actually took part in that survey?
Yes, I'm happy to respond to that, Councilmember. So we had about 1,000 survey respondents. But it was also during the summer. So we spent a lot of time going out to farmers markets, really showing up in person. And so to that, we had about 650 approximate individuals that our team spoke with, that we connected. That was based off of conversations. It was also based off of fact sheets in translated languages that were being handed out.
When you only gave them two choices, between 110th and 108th, so they were forced, they didn't have any other option, then 68% preferred 110th. But did they say why?
So the way that the survey was set up is that the first section of the survey was really meant to identify the relationship to the route. And so there was eight segments that the routes basically split into. And we wanted to try to engage community members to really understand how they navigate through the area. And so when it came down to that specific question, it was really shared with the survey respondents that had shared that they had some kind of a relationship with that specific area. So what we also noticed is that... Do you want me to brief?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. So basically, if... So anyone that was being asked that specific question, it was because they had already shared in their earlier part of the survey, this is how, this is the area that I live in, or this is the area that I work in, or this is... Right, so it was really kind of purposely targeted specifically to neighborhood community groups within the area. And so that was where we ended up understanding that really, it was an interest in, I just want to be able to get to where I need to get to already. And so this, you know, being able to place, being able to have this decision is closer to what my everyday, you know, journey looks like.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you. Since this is information only.
Just one more question, if I can, Mayor.
No, I'm going to let you submit it by email, if you don't mind. Councilmembers on, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I'm really excited about this. This has been five years in planning. So we're excited to get going. And I really appreciated you starting with getting us grounded on 35,000 more households and 70,000 more jobs over the next 20 years. And, you know, we heard that Amazon's already at 14,000 and are going to be at 25,000 in the next couple of years. So I am really excited that we're moving forward with this and that you're doing the outreach as well as making sure that we are as competitive as possible for the FTA grant. Because we know in our budget discussion that, you know, we have a lot of transportation investments. And so to the degree that between King County and FTA, they can fully fund this, it's not money that we need to come out of our own coffers. So I think that's really important. I was thinking about the thoughtfulness of trying to really look at what that downtown area looks like, because the two, the north and the south bus rapid transit line on 405 will also be at the transit center along with this K-line. So really looking at how all of that really works well is going to be really important. I think for me, the question that I have, and maybe you started to answer it for Councilmember Newen House, is I'm trying to understand the difference between 108th and 110th, because 110th is where we've had the pilot, you know, food trucks and other things that we're doing with some road closures. So is the speed the same between 108th and 110th? And are people that are surveyed asked that question based on the speed and reliability comparison of both? Or more of the, do you like apples versus oranges? Not really explaining what that means? So I do think that is one of the questions that I have, because you made a comment on, I think it was Slide 13, about impacts to transportation systems. So can you just help me understand between the two of them? Are they the same speed and reliability for 108th versus 110th?
I can start, and then I have some stuff to add.
Okay, perfect. So we evaluated the travel time on both 108th and 110th, and they were very similar travel times. So we started looking at other factors that would indicate the route choice, which is where we leaned on the community feedback. And we also looked at the ease of implementation of speed and reliability projects, because speed and reliability projects are critical to a BRT project. Because as we've seen in the feedback, people want buses that are fast, reliable, on time. And that's the best way we can guarantee that. And it also makes us competitive for FTA small starts grants. So we were able to identify more projects on the 110th corridor for possible speed and reliability implementation than on the 108th corridor. So while the initial travel times were fairly similar, we feel like there's a chance to make 110th routing faster through the implementation of these projects that we've identified.
So kind of holistically, 110th can actually get us there with the least amount of total costs because of the more rapid improvements along that corridor? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Trying to think, yeah, correct. And then also the implementation of those projects are less costly to implement, because the lanes are already on 110th, and it's simply repurposing some of the right-turn-only lanes to allow transit to continue through the intersection where other vehicles turn right. Transit would continue through onto the other side of the street rather than having to reconstruct pavement, move curbs, and those sorts of things, which we would probably have to do on 108. So the capital cost of implementation on 110th is also lower, and you still get the time savings. So the ratio of time savings to project cost is greater on 110th.
Okay, well, that's really helpful. Thank you for that, and I'm really glad.
I think Olivia had more to add, possibly.
Yeah, I'll just add a few more notes. Just to also speak to some of the earlier public feedback that we heard, or public comment we heard earlier, too. So the 108th corridor between Main and Northeast 10th Street is largely a developed corridor today. It's shared today with people driving, riding transit, biking, walking. And most of that corridor is comprised of only one lane in each direction with protected bicycle facilities and developed properties beyond that space. Conversely, the 110th Avenue Northeast corridor carries less vehicular traffic than 108th does today. And portions of the 110th corridor is also comprised of two lanes in each direction. This isn't consistent for the whole corridor, but portions of the corridor have that, potentially providing those opportunities that Ryan mentioned to implement some of the much-needed speed and reliability projects to make this project competitive. And then just lastly, I'll just make one more note that in the analysis of the guiding principles for the K-line that council adopted in June, we did see very many similarities between 110th and 108th. But in five areas, we saw some distinction between 110th and 108th. And that was particularly in the areas of being multimodal, direct, regionally connected, and community-informed, and convenient. And this we definitely saw in, for example, along 110th, someone would have easier and quicker transfers to other transit services like the B-line and the two-line light rail station. So I just wanted to add that to round out the response.
No, I think that's really great, because we know that 10% of our community doesn't own a car. own a car. And being a regular bus rider, I know that making your connections is really important, because that's part of reliability. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you for the presentation. It sounded very, you know, very carefully looked into and all that. I apologize for not being able to catch all the discussions, because, you know, I mean, it wasn't as clear, and it's a lot more complicated than, I could catch all the ins and outs. I catch a few what's here, a few what's there. I, I believe that the thing that makes it more challenging is that Metro is one of the agencies, and Sound Transit is one of the agencies. And the purpose of having a transportation system is you want to get people to, from center to another center, right? Quickly. But when you get to a center, you want to have people to have access to that particular center. It's the last, last mile. And so I'm not sure, the description you have, 110 or 1108, what's the characteristic of each when a person rides light rail? You know, that's, I think, that's the backbone, I believe, I think it is, for people to get from a region center to another regional center. Once they get there, I think Metro would feel in the, in the access, right? The local access. So by the description you have made, the rapid ride is a, in a way, I've always wondered, it's a more readily, more reasonable, more economical, more easily implementable system to get people from one spot to another spot. At the same time, also catching the local, local connection. But how does it interact with light rail? That's my question. Because light rail's happening, right? It's gonna go from all the places we're talking about. And once people get to a center, they have to be connected somehow. In downtown Bellevue, we have, at one time, 30 years ago, we're talking about a circular loop within the city center itself downtown. But it's too expensive, it doesn't work, and logistics later it won't work. But now we have Bellhop. Bellhop seems to be working pretty good. It doesn't cost that much money. You know, with the, so what else can be used? More economical, more accessible, and could work just as well?
Sounds like we're comparing.
I think that's the concept.
A local transportation to a regional.
Yeah, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Transportation.
Right, I'm throwing it out there to make sure that whatever we do, we have to have a regional collaboration, cooperation. Sound Transit, Metro, and local government, what do we want to accomplish? That's my big question. And you guys are the expert, right? You have to talk to local jurisdictions.
All right, let's let him answer.
So that's your baby.
So what, what we see here and hope to achieve with the K-line is frequent transit that runs at minimum 16 hours a day from Totem Lake to Eastgate Park and Ride, passing through both downtown Kirkland and downtown Bellevue. So in both downtown Kirkland and Bellevue, it'll pass through its transit center, which provides connections to other local bus routes, the 271, 250, 226, those local routes. And then also providing the key access on 110th to Sound Transit, which provides a more regional connection. And then also, there will be two connections with the Stride BRT 405 project, one up north on 85th, and then the one here in downtown Bellevue, which is another regional connection.
So basically, it's a complement, whatever the light rail is not doing.
Correct. So you are absolutely right. When we, we look at the light rails, the spine as well. And so when we institute our restructure projects, say, for EastLink or for Lindwood Link, where we are, we're taking those hours that replicate how light rail already works or where it already goes, we're taking them and then moving them to areas where people want to get to. So we're using that as connections and following to the light rail for like those north-south, north-south connections. And I also wanted to note that we are deeply integrated with Sound Transit, and we work really closely with your staff here and with the staff of Kirkland. So this is truly a partnership project. We integrate, we are actually the operators of the Sound Transit, both Stride service and the light rail service. So Metro provides those operators and like those rail workers, and the vehicle maintenance even on the buses. So we're deeply integrated transit agencies throughout the region to make sure that we can keep people moving in an integrated fashion.
So my request is, I'd like to see the implementation.
Excuse me, Councilmember Lee. Would you mind putting the slide of the map again back up on the screen?
Well, let me finish what I said. I'd like to see one, one thing, is to use what you just said as the skeleton, as the framework, 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 to talk about how this would be implemented. Then, I think I can look at it, make sense or not. Otherwise, how do I relate to one and the other one? I have no reference. Thank you.
Understood.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is, it's just amazing how long it takes on this. I just keep thinking, I sure would like to do it in a couple of years, but this is really a big advancement, and it's really good to hear this. Couple of questions I have. It's, it's a complex thing, but I, I think we're really addressing it very well. Are there, one, out in the, you know, out there in the, in the different cities and everything, is, is there something comparable to what, alternatives to what we're doing? Is there comparable alternative if we don't do, you know, the, the, what am I trying to say? The, the, you know, bat lanes at this point? Do we have an alternative that will actually give us some usage? Or is this something that really will, if we don't do this, we're gonna have a less operative, operating system? I'm just trying to figure out what, how, what, what is the impact of this and why we're putting so much into this? And it seems like you've already come to a decision that, on, on paper and all these other things, that this is, is the way to go on this, for, to really get better, a better connection, better systems and all. Is that correct? And your?
Yeah. Implementing, implementation of a rapid ride project, which is what we call our BRT projects, Bus Rapid Transit.
Right.
Enables us access to federal funding through the Small Starts Grant Program. So it allows us to tap into federal money to do more with our local dollars. So our local dollars will match the money we get from our federal funding if our project gets a medium or a high rating from FTA. And that enables us to do more. And then the implementation of the project, just implementing a large-scale project at once, allows us to take on more capital improvements and then implement the K-line route along with a restructure of existing service to get after Councilmember Lee's point about integrating that transit system. So along with the K-line implementation, it won't just be this new route, but all the existing service within the network will be restructured to better serve the entire system.
Well, that's kind of what I'm interested in, because I think that's, that is a real bonus in a sense. I mean, we're not just looking at a lane down this street, make it work well. It's something that will have a positive effect on the whole system, when it comes down to it. And the other thing is, are, are there any other cities anywhere comparable where bat lanes are already in process, in, in action? And, and are they currently functioning positively? And can we get, are there any that relate to how we're doing this or comparable? It seems to me that we're not, we're not inventing this piece. We're working on something that actually is being done other places. So it's not as if, I think sometime people get the idea that this is something that is, we're inventing this to, to, you know, have a certain piece that works here, but it's kind of destroying or hurting our, the rest of the system. But we're talking about something that actually has worked and is a viable way to go with this. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We look at bat lane projects, I mean, we have examples within our own King County Metro system for both upcoming, our I-line project, which could prove as a good data point as well, as that project's going to construction soon and will be implemented before the K-line. We can look at recently completed projects like the H-line and the G-line for how speed and reliability improvements on those corridors have increased ridership. And that's just locally, but we also can look nationally and could provide some more data on national trends related to bat lanes, if you would like to see that.
Well, I think so. I mean, it, there's a tendency, of course, to look at this and say, well, this is something we don't know about, we haven't done it. And is this just an experiment or something like that? I think we need to, it'd be helpful to have, you know, the population and the city and riders and everything have some idea that this is something that is, is working in other places, and that gives us confidence that we work on this. And it'll be different in certain ways, but that we're, we're not just reinventing, inventing something, we're working on something that can, can do this.
And I also want to talk about the suite of projects that sort of, that come around, rapid ride projects. So we're talking about lighting, we're talking about real-time information signs, we're talking about people, the system that people want to ride.
Right.
They want the certainty, they want the protection, they want the amenities, and they want to know that they can walk out and just get on a bus. So providing these types of treatments provides a system that people actually want to ride and gets them on there. We hear this consistently. We do our rider, non-rider surveys that we do every year, and we have for a very long time, and we hear it throughout the engagement on this project. So I just want to think about, what is a system that we're building that the people here, that live here, you will want to ride and walk out to every day?
Right. Yeah, I just think it, you know, it's, it's easy to say, well, this is something new, and is this not gonna work or not? And it's just an experiment. And I think it really helps when we understand that this is something that, in a sizable number of cities are doing this, are working on it.
Absolutely.
And everything is, is gonna be different, too. But.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Welcome back, welcome back. Glad to be discussing the K-line again. This project will provide Bellevue and our neighboring cities with a greater share of the critical transit service that is needed on the east side. I certainly appreciate the significant investment that Metro is contemplating here. The K-line is gonna connect workers with our employers across the city and around the east side. As mentioned, the connections will occur directly and by linking to light rail and other BRT lines. The K-line also provides an alternative for those who can use it to avoid 405 and hopefully give some more room to those who need to continue to use 405. A wide range of community members will benefit from the quick-moving segment that will link downtown Bellevue to Bellevue College and Eastgate. The crosstown connection solely within the city of Bellevue will be, will be a great advantage for folks that just want to travel across the city quickly. Makes sense, too, that we're hearing from folks that they put a high value on speed and reliability, and I'm glad we're keeping that priority top of mind as we move forward. As we continue with the next phase of engagement, of the engagement process, I want to be sure that we look for ways to mitigate impacts when possible, closely examine areas of major concern, and consider options to expand the right-of-way. Thank you for returning to the council's K-line guiding principles as you move through the planning and engagement process, as this is especially important when determining the best route through downtown, which I think you've done. I believe going with the bat lanes instead of dedicated bus-only lanes is the right decision and provides good balance by keeping all travel modes moving as quickly as possible. Anxious to hear back next year and get some more detailed information about possible bat lane candidate projects. Appreciate the tremendous investment, again, being made here in the, with the K-line. It's needed and appreciated. I would like to ask the Metro team to make some additional investments that enhance connections to the K-line for the wide range of users who will use it and love it. We need to be sure that folks who walk, bike, or roll to the K-line have the infrastructure in place that enables them to get there. Additionally, I think the city should look for ways to invest in K-line infrastructure. While I appreciate Metro's leadership, I do think we should make some strategic investments alongside them that make the K-line even better. So for me, there's no question about the benefits of the K-line. We need the K-line, but we need to get it right. At this point, I think the K-line is definitely on track. Look forward to staying engaged in the process and having a final locally preferred alternative letter of support done by mid-March. So thank you.
Great comments. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. What a great comments, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ryan, Amanda, and I tried my best. Yuvia. Yuvia.
Yuvia.
And thank you, of course, Andrew and Olivia for a great work. I agree with everyone here that we are going to have density increasing our employer and employees. So we have just two options, because we don't have any more roads. We need to make the existing car more, go more efficient, and maybe reduce cars by having something like K-line. And hopefully, this project achieves both goals. Councilmember Newenhouse asked all of my data question. It seems you're coming back with a lot of data on the general traffic flow and also transit efficiency and ridership. My ask would be to, in your modeling, please model all of those potential employer shuttles, because those are going to be huge impact, bringing lots of people, they are very on time, they are very reliable, and if we can make them bring all of those people in those lines, I think that's, increase the efficiency. I have two questions on the community engagement side and also funding side. The community engagement side, I just wanted to know the scope. Who are we reaching out? And what specific question are we asking about bats and those kind of question? So that's my community engagement ask. Then my funding is very simple, is what is our contingency plan if the Fed doesn't pay the 50%? And how does that impact the whole timeline of the whole project? Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie McMayor. So as far as Phase 3 is concerned, currently, we are working closely with your staff on trying to make sure that we are on the same page when it comes to the questions and how we want to best communicate and best engage with communities. For Phase 2, when we did the exact same thing, we had collaborated in terms of identifying who are all of the neighborhood groups, community-based organizations, employers. We had a huge, huge list. And I think it's important to note that because of the pause that had taken place, and because last time that we had actually engaged with community was back in 2019, there was definitely an interest in really seeing the, the map, seeing the images. And everything was already very much available, both online, we had virtual meetings, we made ourselves accessible to the public in lots of different ways, as I'd mentioned earlier, farmers' markets, but then also street teaming and et cetera and so on. So the idea is that we would want to continue doing that, but we will also, as Ryan had also mentioned earlier, our plan is also to really open ourselves up and say that we would like to have briefings. We are going to want to ask that any organization that would like us to come specifically to them and walk them through, you know, Phase 3, you know, will definitely be part of this Phase 3 engagement.
And what are the specific? What are the specific question are you going to ask about the bats?
So that's the part that's still currently in.
You're developing that part.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll be quick. I definitely support employer shuttles using the bat lanes. And it really makes sense to me that we're choosing 110th over 108th, because if we chose 108th, we'd be eliminating cars from being able to be on that road, and I don't think any business wants that. So I, it looks like it makes sense to me to be on 110th. I thought Councilmember Hamilton brought up a really good point of wanting that multimodal connection to the K-line. And so that brings up my request, which I told Andrew. Can we have a little bicycle insignia on Main Street to show that a bike can also be on the bat lane as we go east towards the dedicated, or it's not dedicated, the shared sidewalk bike path?
Well, that's a good question. Can, can bikes be on bat lanes? I don't think that they could.
I think that we need to consult our attorneys, but I did not see that in the RCW.
Well, that kind of makes a big difference to me, because then you're saying that there's no place for a bike to be on Main Street, for that block, that mid-block.
I'm happy to chime in here, too. And I, I think there's a lot that's going on in the city, and so sometimes there's just a lot of project synergy. One of the project plans that we've provided to Metro, because as part of this process, we've provided them a lot of plans that the city currently has, either in construction or in design. And one of the projects that the Transportation Department has is for, or are for off-street bicycle facilities along the entirety of Main Street. So prior to the bat lane starting, there, and prior to K-line implementation, we do have a project that is adding bicycle facilities and off-street path along Main Street. But yeah, I think it, that wouldn't necessarily prohibit people from traveling on their bike and other, using other options, but that's something like Amanda said, we can follow up on, too.
That would be great. I definitely would like to know that. And then the last thought is, is it possible after a year to kind of reassess and see how this is going and bring that information back to us? Like, are we getting cars off the road? Are we not slowing down traffic on 110th?
Oh, after the implementation of the project, just to clarify.
Yeah, absolutely. We, you know, with, with G-line and H-line and recently launched lines, like, we're evaluating how those projects perform, what the ridership trends are, and what the actual impacts to the network are, going back to one of the earlier questions. We can do our best modeling it and projecting traffic and projecting ridership, but the only way to really see how it works is to see how it works. And then we can always evaluate and then, and then pivot or make recommendations from there as well.
Okay, great. If we have any more questions, we can email you, Andrew, and you'll send them along? Okay, great. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Yep, thank you for having us.
We're gonna take a 10-minute break and resume at 8 o'clock. Okay, sorry about that. The clocks aren't synced in the building. Okay, so this is our second study session items. The manager, would you like to introduce for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a presentation on the Budget and Work Program for the Regional Coalition for Housing, or ARCH. Housing, or ARCH. And in line with ARCH's inter-local agreement, annually, the council receives and reviews and considers adoption of the ARCH Executive Board's recommendation on their Budget and Work Program. And so tonight, we have Lindsay Masters, ARCH Executive Director, and then our Planning Director Tara Johnson to give the presentation and seek council action. And with that, I will hand it over to Tara.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, council members. So just wanted to start off our presentation tonight with a little bit of context. As City Manager Carlson mentioned, each fall, ARCH visits member cities for review and approval of the next year's work program and budget. As you know, ARCH really supports the city of Bellevue as well as other member cities by providing support to collaborate on planning and providing for affordable housing. Bellevue is one of ARCH's founding members, and also we administer ARCH's overall funding as well. They've also offered support to our city efforts over the last few decades. Their budget is a complement to the capital funding round for projects that come to council in Q1 of every year. Their work program also includes administration of capital investments in affordable housing, support for housing policy and planning, and implementation of local inclusionary and incentive programs, as well as outreach and education. ARCH also assists us with administration of our affordable rental and ownership units here and also play a pivotal role with our Housing Stability Program and the, or also called 1590 Funding. They've also supported our work on various planning initiatives as we've needed their help and assistance, with Bellevue, of course, being the ultimate decision-maker on significant policy issues in Bellevue. So tonight, we're coming before council. We're requesting that council consider directing staff to prepare legislation, which will come before you at a future meeting. For two asks, one is to approve the ARCH 2025-2026 Administrative Budget and Work Program, and then additionally, to add two new FTE positions for ARCH. As part of that request, we'll prepare a budget amendment for the General Fund in the amount of $794,345. This gives the city expenditure authority to pay ARCH's staff costs, and then ARCH, of course, reimburses the city for these positions, so no additional city resources are needed to cover this associated expense. As part of tonight's presentation and overview, we'll start off with a background. We'll cover the 2025-2026 budget that was approved by the ARCH Executive Board, and then we'll cover some of the work program priorities, the strategic plan implementation, and then specific Bellevue work plan items as well. So with that, I'm going to pass things on to Lindsay.
Thanks, Tara, for that great intro. I'm going to start just by covering some basic background. Some of you are very familiar with this, having been on the council a number of years, but wanted to provide a refresher about ARCH as an organization. We were formed over three decades ago with leadership from the city of Bellevue as well as Kirkland and Redmond through inter-local agreement, and the intent was to provide a framework for communities on the east side to plan for and provide affordable housing collaboratively to work together on that effort. Since then, we've expanded to 15 different jurisdictions here on the east side, as well as King County, that was also a founding member, and we have demonstrated a strong track record of success in helping to produce close to 10,000 affordable units now, produced or preserved across our member jurisdictions. Important to note, the inter-local was amended in 2010 and included an important role for an administering agency, and we've been very grateful to have City of Bellevue to provide that critical contribution to this regional collaboration since that time. As Tara mentioned, the ILA does require city councils to have important decision-making year-to-year on our budget and work program, the work that we do. And so tonight, we're here to talk about the recommendation developed by the ARCH Executive Board in June of this year. Just to note that while this presentation isn't about our strategic plan, much of the information that was baked into our recommendation for the Budget and Work Program was informed by that plan, so I'll be talking a bit about that. That plan itself was adopted by the board in March of this year after a deliberative process that was based on input from a wide variety of the stakeholders that we work with, from the development community to operators and service providers, member city staff, elected officials and planning commissioners, as well as other community leaders. We did collect a range of different views on where ARCH should be focusing its efforts in the future, not always consistent views, some competing opinions about that, but a lot of support for us to focus on building more affordable housing and really continuing to play a key role in that. So much of our strategic plan was developed to help us advance those strategies that are going to get our members to be building more affordable housing faster, and I will talk more about that as we walk through the Budget and Work Plan. So I'll touch on some highlights first on the budget side. Each year, the Executive Board works collaboratively as a body to develop a recommendation for all the councils to consider, taking into account the diverse needs and priorities across our membership. And this year, the board, for the first time, developed a biennial budget recommendation with the intent to better align with the majority of our members who are on that biennial budget cycle. You might recall, last year, we talked about considerations around staffing and pausing increases in staffing until we completed our strategic plan. So with the completion of that earlier this year, the board undertook a process to evaluate a series of options around staffing and ultimately recommended two new positions in this upcoming budget. The first is helping ARCH to lead ARCH's communications and education and engagement work, as well as serve as a policy advisor to support our members as we implement combined efforts around state and regional policy and funding strategies that are really critical to our ability to increase local production of affordable housing. The second position is really working more on the special project side and trying to accelerate specific development opportunities on the ground, providing critical technical expertise to inform funding strategies and the creation of partnerships that can take advantage of significant opportunities that we do have across the east side on public property, nonprofit-owned property, properties owned by religious organizations, many partners that want to be a part of those projects, and we want to help provide that support to seed those projects with technical expertise and build on the work that we've done over the years to help those partnerships be successful. The overall budget also includes adjustments to align with Bellevue's recent compensation study, so we come into line with that next year, and continues to include some additional funding for outside legal counsel that enhances the great services we receive from the city attorney's office. Bellevue's contributions towards ARCH's budget are shown on this slide. As Tara mentioned, these funds were already incorporated in the city budget that was adopted last week. Our total budget, counting all of our revenues, amounts to $2.7 million in 2025 and $2.8 million in 2026, and Bellevue's contributions are made up primarily of General Fund, which amounts to about $600,000 in 2025, $622,000 in 2026. And in addition, Bellevue contributes revenue from the Housing Stability Program or the 0.1% sales tax that covers the cost of one FTE that was previously approved when the council established the city's Housing Stability Program. The rest of ARCH's budget is made up of contributions from our other member jurisdictions, as well as some program income that we receive, and of those, General Fund dues, Bellevue's portion represents about 25%. Now I want to shift over to talk about the work program. There's a lot more information on our work program in the packet, but I do want to touch on some highlights that will get to how we are hoping to advance strategies that are going to help you build more affordable housing faster. One of the important areas of work that will be contributed to by one of the new staff positions is work on state and regional policy and funding engagement. We do know that the state has placed significantly greater responsibilities on local jurisdictions around affordable housing, while also taking an increasingly larger role in mandating how communities plan for that need, while at the same time, we have a major and growing resource deficit to actually build this housing. So we know that we're going to need some additional action at the state, county, and local levels to come together and address that gap. What some of this could look like in our work program and what we've outlined for in the packet is first, coming together to convene our members to develop legislative priorities around affordable housing. We've been doing this work in, we've been starting to build this work in the last couple of years and did convene our members and work closely with Planning and Government Affairs staff in our cities to help identify a couple areas of priorities for this year and are excited to see how we could support that work in the 2025 session. This continues our past focus and priority on facilitating proposals for specific revenue sources for affordable housing, so we're eager to support that work. We also have, I think, a good example of what successful collaboration across local jurisdictions can look like on affordable housing. We have a sister organization in Pierce County that's really made legislative coordination and shared advocacy a priority for their members, and they've had some significant success in getting some of their priorities adopted by the legislature. The second area I want to talk about is our work on local policy and planning. So in addition to the ongoing support that we provide to cities in this area, we want to be able to provide increased support for special projects, as I mentioned, including transit-oriented development projects and other opportunities on public land. Additionally, we've continued to focus on a policy issue that's been significant for affordable housing providers across the state and especially in King County, which is the level of cost burden that tenants are experiencing even in affordable housing. This is something we studied closely the last couple of years, have come up with some options and want to support our members to continue how they can help address that. We're also participating with public funders that are taking on a study of the same issues statewide and having discussions with their staff as they develop a report for the legislature on that topic. In addition to the new work we wanted to emphasize, we are continuing our commitment to the core important work that ARCH has done for many years for our members. We want to be able to provide you with a very efficient and cost-effective means of implementing your local programs, both funding investments and incentive programs, and I'll talk more about that when we touch on the work in Bellevue. We did evaluate in the strategic planning process whether ARCH should consider expanding to more direct services for renters, homeowners, and people seeking housing, and we are, we decided not to go down that road and to focus instead, again, on the role of helping cities to build more affordable housing faster. But we did want to highlight trying to take advantage of partnerships where possible to help meet that broader range of community needs, and I'll touch on one of those examples in a moment. The strategic plan also raised some important questions around ARCH's governance, as well as our legal structure. We had a variety of thoughts from our board members on that that we determined we needed to assess more intentionally through a separate study, so we plan to take on a consultant soon who will support the board in helping to evaluate some of these issues, and certainly will want to engage elected officials in that effort as well. The goal of that is really to understand the structure we've had in place many years. Are there any ways to improve on that, streamline it so we can better meet our mission and make best use of the resources that we have? We do have a task force of board members assembled to oversee that and are really grateful to have Nathan McComman participating in that effort. Finally, I just did want to touch on an example of community partnerships that we take on through our work, and that's highlighting the work we do around marketing new affordable housing. One of the things that we do is we do a lot of outreach to cultivate a very diverse list of households who are seeking affordable housing in East King County. We have close to 10,000 households on that list now and continues to grow all the time. Many of those households want to live in Bellevue, so it's very exciting when we have new projects opening in Bellevue. We've also cultivated relationships with a lot of community-based organizations and service providers so that they can get advanced notification when there's affordable housing coming online as well. And then finally, we are working on trying to develop recommended best practices that we can provide to developers so that they can also be encouraged to form partnerships on their own, and a great example of that was the project at East Gate and the partnership that they had with the school district there. Those are things we would love to help replicate in other projects. Now I'll just touch on what a lot of this work looks like in Bellevue. We're very busy with the many good things the city's been working on around affordable housing in Bellevue. First and foremost, we have been really excited at the increased investment that's been made possible for the, through the Housing Stability Program, and work closely with the city to coordinate administration of those funds in coordination with our Housing Trust Fund. We also work closely with multiple departments, development services, and community development to administer your local incentive programs, both MFTE and land use incentives, and in 2024, we're excited to have four new projects that actually opened up with a significant amount of new units. There are an additional seven projects in the pipeline under those programs that we're actively working on. And then we do provide ongoing stewardship of the completed projects. We have a total of 19 completed rental projects now in Bellevue, as well as 92 resale-restricted And then, I think in addition to the day-to-day administration of programs and stewardship of affordable housing, we partner often with city staff in their planning efforts, both in thinking around how to implement the current affordable housing strategy that you have on the books, as well as looking at how you are planning to update that strategy in the coming year. So we've been doing a lot of work with Tara's team and others to help provide great advice and technical support through those processes and are excited to see what that update is going to look like. Just a final note about upcoming work in 2025. I mentioned the governance study that ARCH is going to be doing, and we've had a lot of conversation about how that can dovetail with the work the city is doing to consider development of an Office of Housing. And with that, I'll hand it over to Tara.
Thank you, Lindsay. I just want to touch briefly on some of the work relating to the Office of Housing, so want to thank council for your work on that. We were excited to see affordable housing and homelessness prevention are significant council priorities in the 2024-2026 timeline. That was emphasized, for sure, in the 2025-26 budget that you That was emphasized for sure in the 2025-26 budget that you adopted last week, which created the Office of Housing next year. So we're already working very closely with Arch. Arch is working and coordinating with our housing team, as Lindsay mentioned, currently residing in community development. And we're all working very closely with the city manager's office to scope out the work program for the Office of Housing so that more housing units can be brought online as part of the objectives for that group. So that concludes our presentation. As I said at the start of the, of the overview, we're here requesting council direction to prepare legislation to approve the 2025-2026 work program and budget and the budget amendment to support the addition of two FTEs. And with that, I'll turn things back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great presentation. I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to start with a motion and then we'll open it up for discussion.
I move to direct staff to prepare legislation approving the Arch 2025-2026 administrative budget and work program.
Second.
And amending the City of Bellevue budget to accommodate the request for two new Arch staff positions.
Second.
All right. Thank you. So let's start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, too. Thank you for all the great work you do supporting housing needs on the east side. Reading through the work plan, I came away with a sense of hope and optimism for preserving and adding more critically important housing in our community. Very excited to support your continued success. Also appreciate the engagement and support. Our city manager Carlson and deputy city manager McComman provide to Arch through their involvement on Arch's executive board. I know through that involvement on the executive board that they've had a chance to closely examine the administrative budget and work plan, and they are supportive of it. Of course, look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Have a couple of questions for you, pretty much regarding the new staff positions. Got a little bit of information on the government affairs position, which I'd, I'd like to get a little bit more detail on. But the other local planning, special projects advisor, what's involved in that role and when do you plan to fill it?
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about that a little bit more. I can say a lot about what that work looks like because it's work that current staff do, wearing, wearing multiple hats. And we've had a lot of past examples of how we can help accelerate some of those projects. We often get requests for technical assistance, advice, navigation of partnership from community organizations or others that have land. We know that there's a lot of religious organizations currently in Bellevue, as well as a host of other cities that are in a position of needing to quickly figure out how to make use of their property, potentially having deadlines associated with that and really want to pursue affordable housing. So we have past experience being able to help connect to partnerships, help them evaluate feasibility of potential projects on their sites, run technical, other technical analyses, looking at what types of funding they might qualify for, and really just trying to accelerate that. We, we do that on, we've done that on a smaller scale. And when we look at the landscape of opportunities, we decided it's important for us to be able to provide more of that support and more robust levels of that support going forward.
Okay, great. That makes a lot of sense. Appreciate that. Two, then the government affairs position, could you give just a little more detail on that? What does the role advocate for? Where do the, does that advocacy take place? That kind of thing.
Yes, and I'm smiling at Diane because she was a, a part of the strategic planning process where we had a lot of discussion about the word advocacy and Arch's role vis a vis our members. And so we, we were very intentional with the board in carving out a staff position that's designed to support our members in implementation of your priorities, that's trying to seek to find the areas of alignment so that you can have a collective voice on the issues that are going to be most critical for your, for your efforts around affordable housing. So we don't anticipate this person is going to be out lobbying. They are going to be working with member cities, government affairs, and other staff that work on housing issues to bring you together with your partners in the region. We also do think that person's going to have an important role providing policy advice and information. So being able to add to the expertise, particularly for smaller jurisdictions that don't have that dedicated staff capacity in-house that was identified as a significant need by a number of cities that they're hoping that this role can help to fill. Does that help answer?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that. How many Arch member cities don't have government affairs?
It's easier for me to count the ones that do, yeah.
Kind of trying to get an idea of the gap that we're, we're filling here.
I can think of maybe five that do have it.
Okay.
So that would leave 10 that do not.
And then this person's just going to be working with Arch members? Or is there a role at the county or a role in Olympia for this person as well?
I, I think what the, the idea would be that it's, it's a process that's led by our members and we're facilitating. And to the extent we can help play a coordination role, we would, we would love to be able to do that. We're optimistic there are going to be areas of common interest amongst our membership just based on early conversations, but that really we're helping to provide you with the talking points and the data and the support so that you can go play that role in Olympia, but not that Arch staff are going to be out there doing that.
Okay. Okay, great. Appreciate the clarity on that. That's one where I just think I, I want to pay some attention going forward and I certainly trust your good judgment and the judgment of our city manager's office in, in staying on top of that. So I appreciate that and something I'll, I'll look forward to watching. Again, thanks for all the hard work. Thanks for being here tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I really fully support the increased funding and work programs, you know, for the, in, in going forward. And I think it's a, it's a good level. I do think that we have to really work harder to, to meet the needs out there. I really appreciate your, the presentation tonight, and I'm very happy to see how Arch continues to leverage tools and resources to get more people on the east side into more affordable housing units and very successfully. And this is critical to meeting the community needs. I do think we need, as I said, to increase, we all need to increase our support for this work and, and the housing needs, and, you know, we'll work on that as it goes along. But again, I, and I've worked with and, you know, both in, in different, different capacities with you for a long time. And it's just amazing how much work you've done, how you've made this thing so, so working at a certain high level. And how do you keep all of these cats running out different ways? What, 15 people, 15 organizations? And I think it's just amazing to do that. And it's really, it's really hard rendering to see you continue to go forward on that. So in terms of partners, are there specific roadblocks that affordable housing providers are seeing as we head into the implementation of this new 20-year comprehensive plan? What do you anticipate or, or planning for?
Yeah, I could, I could spend a long time talking about that. It is a very difficult time for affordable housing providers right now. I think they experienced a lot of financial impact during the pandemic and the moratorium. We're still seeing the repercussions of that. Yeah, I think sustaining the projects that we've already invested in is going to be a significant issue across the state as well as here locally. And we're keeping a close eye and, and being in conversation with some of our partners that own the most significant amounts of affordable housing here in the region. We also know that the cost of building new projects went up probably at least 50% during, since the course of the pandemic and up to today. So the gap that we have to fill to help create, sustain that production pipeline is, is much bigger than it was just a handful of years ago.
Yeah, that's, that's been a real issue in a lot of things, but the, the amount of what things cost and what, for different things is probably double what we were doing just not too long ago. So it is difficult. I do want to compliment you, see, having watched this and working with you for a long time. And it's just amazing at how much you put together and the work that's done. And we're very proud of being part of that. But we all need to, and we're, we're very keyed up to continue to make this even better. So thanks for the work you do and let's keep going uphill.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Excellent report. There's a big challenge Arch is facing. Arch has been around, like you said, for 30 years. And it's always been the premier regional body, you know, that work together, coalition. And it's been very successful. It's been leading the way for a long time. Now with affordable housing being, you know, the important issue and a lot of different needs are here and also the lot of different players are involved. You used to be have three cities, now 15. And beside the cities, you have a lot more other private nonprofits, a lot of other partners. They're also in there doing good things. So I think that it's necessary that you have to be better equipped, you know, get a better resource, more, more money to keep up, you know, with being involved and being able to provide the, the resources necessary, you know, to keep up with this. I think Arch should be a very prime partner to do this. The challenge is that I see, I would like to have you answer me. I don't want this to be a competitive game. It's not a zero-sum game. I would like to see each of the partners, including nonprofits, working together, complementing each other. Like you're hiring the governmental people, hiring policy folks. Many of the information you get are, can be shared, right? So I think you are using the efficiency to help each other. Everybody can be all economical. So I hope that you have a real good collaborative effort, as you've always had. Working together, the cities that may not have the resources, being able, can get information from you, you can help them. The city may... The city may...
Earlier on in Arch, there were some homeownership units that were still part of the stewardship of. As we look forward in Arch, are we looking at both rentals and homeownership units? Because it seems like as we move people into affordable homeownership, then there's more units available for rentals. And it's really a continuum of housing stability. So, those are... And then lastly, the preservation of the at-risk affordable housing units and just seems like that will be even more important, those that are privately owned right now that may be at risk of falling, of being sold and becoming market price. So, a couple of comments and questions embedded in there. Thanks.
Sure. I tried to take some notes because you had a lot of good, a lot of good questions. As far as trying to expand the community of developers that we work with, that was one of the first things that I wanted to work on when it came to Arch. And I think we have been doing that. There's, we've done, we've formed relationships and made awards to developers we had never worked with before in the last few years. I will say that that's become more challenging as the conditions for developing become more difficult and the cost of projects increases. And our resources haven't necessarily kept up with that to be able to attract developers with that capital. So, that's something we continue to work on, but I think is getting harder and harder. You mentioned the affordability of the units that we shared, and those are real projects that are on our website now that are going to be coming open in the next year. Those are primarily ones that are coming online through city incentive programs. And there's a variety of affordability levels that are directed by each city's code. And we tend to see those units don't get quite as affordable as the units that we invest local funds in. But you can kind of make a dent in that, the more local incentives you can stack on top of each other. So, we have seen city inclusionary programs get as low as fifty percent AMI by combining a lot of incentives together. So, we do know that those units at fifty, there's significantly more demand and they lease up a lot faster. And those are really valuable, so it's important to raise that question. Same thing with the two- and three-bedroom units. There's increasingly a lot of data that the market has overbuilt studios and one bedrooms, notably in Seattle, but we're keeping an eye on that trend in East King County as well. And we're talking with other public funding partners about how we underwrite new projects and make sure that what's being proposed is matched by the demand. I wrote down homeownership units. I'm also glad you brought that up. It's a hugely important issue. I talked about the ten thousand households seeking housing in East King County. The vast majority of them would like to have an opportunity at homeownership. We do have new homeownership units coming online in some jurisdictions, but not many. And we are looking towards the implementation of middle housing as a potential way that we can help produce more homeownership opportunities. So, we're excited to see how cities implement that. Arch did develop a report on this issue and worked with a working group of city staff across our members to help study that issue of how you might be able to promote affordability through your implementation of middle housing. And then finally, you asked about preservation of privately-owned affordable units. That's been a challenge for a number of years. We've already lost a lot of housing that was naturally affordable. And I think we do also have great partners, though, that have helped us to try to find those opportunities, the Housing Authority being a great example, but also some other for-profit and nonprofit partners that are out there looking for those opportunities to acquire those properties before they are flipped. It comes back to resources again. When we have funds available to help invest in those, then we can preserve them as affordable. But when we don't have that resource, sometimes those opportunities have to slip away. I think, I hope I covered them all. If I missed anything, let me know.
Yeah, no, you did. And I think it really goes to what does a long-term revenue-stable source look like so that we can take advantage of these opportunities? So, I look forward to more in the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lindsey and Tara. And Lindsey, I wish you were feeling better, so hang in there, we're almost done.
I'm afraid my cold come out, sorry.
Yeah, exactly. No, really appreciate all the great comments from my colleagues and supportive comments as I am. I mean, Arch is a gem. We're lucky to have Arch in our region, has done so much in terms of maintaining and constantly looking to grow our affordable housing in East County. And love the, you know, the vision that you adopted in 2023 of the East King County thriving inclusive community where the housing needs of people of all income levels are met. So, that is great. And I think every day Arch is moving closer and closer to that goal. I will replicate all the great comments and questions that have already been asked. I did want to touch on one thing, though, and that was, and in general, I'm very supportive of what you've brought here forward today, but I think Councilmember Hamilton brought it up earlier, the lobbyist or advocacy role gives me some heartburn. It wasn't all that long ago, you might remember, one of my colleagues had quite an issue with Arch getting involved in advocacy. And it kind of surprises me that Arch wants to dip its toe in those waters again, just because, well, you've got sixteen jurisdictions, right, that are contributing to Arch, all with different priorities, different ledge agendas. How are you going to balance that? Because personally, I've been on boards and commissions where... Is there something funny, Mayor, on the note?
No.
Do you want to share with me?
It was my bad.
Oh, okay. It wasn't that long ago, right? So, and I've been on boards and commissions where I haven't been able to support something because it didn't align with Bellevue's legislative agenda. So, I'm just curious how you're going to, and I think Councilmember Lee touched on this a little bit, too. How are you going to manage that conflict of competing interests and priorities?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think part of why you're seeing a governance study as part of our strategic plan is we really did want to unpack how Arch works as a coalition on this issue at a broader level, at the state and regional level, given all the issues that you raised, that they are distinct decision-making bodies inside every city. You have a representative within Arch, and that's how we come together and try to govern our operation and make decisions. But as we get into issues where there potentially are more conflicts or differences of opinions, it's important that we look at how we govern and make decisions as an organization. So, that's a big part of why that's coming forward as an issue. I think there's different views even on our board about how we do that. And so, we're approaching it very cautiously and intentionally with a lot of checking back with our board and a lot of checking to make sure we're approaching things and setting up the process in the right way. This year is a good example. We held many conversations with city staff before talking about legislative priorities with the board. We wanted to be informed by what you are already thinking and doing and where there's needs and opportunities, and then be able to be bringing that information to the board before they had any conversations about potential positions on legislative issues. And even at the end of the day, I think the way the board operated was, we want to come up with ideas that we can share with councils for you to consider as a menu of options, but we understand at the end of the day, you're going to make that call on where you stand on legislative issues. We hope that we can increase the amount of alignment in our members on issues. And I do feel optimistic based on the feedback we're getting so far, that you can find that alignment with other cities that share a lot of the same challenges and issues that you're working on here in Bellevue. But we do know that this is new and we do want to approach it with a lot of caution.
Well, I appreciate your thoughtful and cautious approach. I have to, I'm a little bit skeptical, just because I just see these competing issues and it's going to be difficult to bring everybody together. Not on everything. I'm sure there'll be things that, I mean, that's why all the sixteen jurisdictions are a part of this, right? So, now, a different question, since I've heard multiple times tonight, a little bit about revenue sources and sustainable revenue sources. Is that part of the reason why we're looking at some advocacy as well? Is there some policy that Arch is looking to champion already in terms of revenue sources? And if so, can you share that?
Yeah, and I'd say it's not necessarily tied to anything new. We have been talking as Arch about that issue since before my time, I think going back to 2015. It's been on Arch's work program to be looking at how to create more dedicated funding sources for affordable housing. In the last few years, we had more specific conversations and indeed engagement with elected officials as well to figure out where there might be more consensus on what types of revenue sources you would actually be interested in having as options at the local level. But we also know we're in an environment where these decisions are made by the state and there's a lot of other voices about what those funding tools might be. So, we're also in reaction mode to things that are proposed by the legislature. So, I think our hope is that we would engage with you so you can be informed in how you assess those things that are coming forward. And again, hopefully find areas of commonality in what our membership uses, potentially feasible approaches.
Okay. Well, I'll be very interested to hear what those specific revenue sources are, because I think there are some ideas that are not being shared tonight that maybe it would be interesting to have that conversation at a later date. But thank you.
You know, I want to kind of go off of what you said, Councilmember Nguyen-House, asking if would the Arch legislative agenda be different than the cities that fund Arch?
So, we, and we don't necessarily intend to adopt a separate and standalone legislative agenda, but we did want to identify priorities and then share those with cities, again, more or less a menu of options, things that you could incorporate. But we're not planning to have some separate agenda that we go out and then shop around and talk about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Lindsey, and the whole Arch team for amazing work on developing this thoughtful 2025, 2026 budget and work program. I also wanted to acknowledge our own Bellevue Community Development Team, Tara Johnson, on behalf of that, for their dedication to address our city housing challenges. I have two questions. One is kind of the follow-up with what Councilmember Hamilton and Nguyen-House asked. I believe there was a need analysis, and now there is a need for hiring two people. Is there any specific metrics or outcomes? Have you established to measure their impact and justify their value to Arch mission over the next year? Like both quantity or qualitative impact? If we come back one year from now, we can say that was a great decision to hire these two people because they added all of this value that we never had. That's the first question. The second question you can just maybe address by the email or later. I read both a strategy plan and memorandum. Great job. I noticed that there are lots of references to metrics, implementation, the board is going to monitor. But I couldn't find any specific measure tied to this phrase, build more housing faster. That's the main strategy. Is there a separate implementation or operation plan document that have detailed performance management specifically addressed that phrase, that is build more housing faster? That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, that's another great question. And we have talked as Arch about, in fact, one of the things I pushed for when it came to Arch was some metrics and measurable goals that we could talk about and benchmark our progress to. In the time since that, there's been a lot of specific metrics that have been, that have been established for cities to be benchmarking to. So, you have the numbers associated with the countywide planning policies of the GMA in general. We also have individual cities that have adopted their own specific targets around affordable housing, including Bellevue. So, I think we decided as Arch, we weren't going to add another layer of goals and metrics, but that we would be providing that critical data and so that you can continue to report on the targets that you've set for yourself. But I think as Arch, we also know what our historic production has been as a region. It's probably a few hundred units a year of affordable housing ebbs and flows. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. And we know that that's far short of where we need to be. So, I think as a baseline, we've got a pretty clear sense of what we're measuring our past success against. And hopefully, those positions that we have identified are going to be helping to accelerate the number of projects that are in our pipeline and then ultimately helping us to have the funding tools that we need for more of those to be built faster instead of having to wait in the queue for the limited amounts of funds that we've had for a number of years.
Thank you. I will do a follow-up to just dive deep into that because to me, it seems the Arch doesn't have a detailed performance management and you're just relying on the cities and other, they have the goals and the stuff. But then we are hiring two people for Arch. So, to me, there are lots, to me, there are not connectivity. So, I would schedule a follow-up meeting to just dive deep and learn more about that. Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
So, I'll just say, I appreciate my colleagues' comments. I'm a big fan of Arch. You have been able to help this region create affordable housing when it would be really hard to do it without you. And when I looked at the pictures on the slides, you had a picture of a new apartment building in Bellevue, where I have friends who just rented a really nice apartment. And I didn't even know that that was an Arch partner. So, you have affordable units in that building as well. So, we're getting affordable units interspersed with market rate all over the city, and I'm really proud of the work that you're doing. So, we have a motion on the table. It has been seconded. There are not any other comments or questions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes. Thank you. Okay. So, I have a little blurb to read here. I've got to find it. Charmaine, here we go. So, we're going to recess from the public portion of our agenda, and we're going to reconvene in an executive session to discuss one matter of property acquisition pursuant to RCW forty-two point thirty point one ten sub section B. And that session will last approximately for twenty minutes, and then we will adjourn from there. So, thank you very much.